Yeah. Yeah, honestly.
I'm gonna move this.
It's like...
Huh?
I mean, it had water everywhere.
It might leak?
Uh-huh, it had water everywhere. This, oh, this one.
I'm just saying, you think it ain't gonna leak right now?
It ain't got nothing to do with the rain, it's the air.
I know.
But you can take it down.
No.
Oh, no, she should be here. She probably running.
Oh, okay, I just tried to...
Oh, no. Oh, no, she was enough.
Did you see this right here? You see this right here? And, uh, let's not read this wrong. They got two things like this on this right here, seventeen fifty-six. And this is another on this, seventeen fifty-six.
Well, I'm gonna tell you just another thing, not a minor thing.
Record with their money, how you gonna...
A permanent, that's your investment. You can win it if I say...
Get her to the hospital. Offer me eighty-five grand a year to, um, do what we, um, return the... They was gonna require him to travel more than what I was already traveling, so...
How far he had to travel, did he?
Ooh, I don't know, fifteen states, into New Mexico, all...
That's a trip, man.
They always be...
You go to Dallas and you can take another?
I live in Dallas.
That Dallas?
I travel so much and I got so many...
Everybody.
I can wear you out. Amen.
Where is it?
Just the smell of it. How you see those construction workers outside? If a five percent of big...
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Seeing big bugs and... I'm gonna sit on the cover, Mr. Locke. I go downstairs, get my blanket and sit on top of it.
I have some stuff in my car that I keep with me when I travel. I pray that it moves.
Hey, cheese, hey, cheese.
Thank you, Larry. Thank you. Okay.
Not today. You don't need to see the video. The public needs to see it. Look, don't you get paid every day? What you wanna make? No, that's what you get paid. We do other stuff than being you.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna be in three hours for every twenty dollars.
We're doing the people's business.
I only get paid a hundred.
Notice was given of this regular meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons for Thursday, February eighth, two thousand eighteen, at six P.M. in the courtroom at City Hall. We have a call to order. We're gonna observe a moment of silence. Uh, we're gonna have an invocation. We're gonna ask Councilman Shaw to lead us to the throne of grace. We're gonna ask, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Marvin Moore to lead us in the pledge of allegiance to this great nation. Shall we stand?
Lord, we just come to you tonight just thanking you so much for your many blessings that you've given us. Lord, at this special time right now, we pray for Ms. Goldman's daughter, who is at the emergency room. We just pray for your intervention to help her, Lord. And, Lord, we just thank thee for this opportunity to get together and to work on city business. We pray that everything would be done with thought and wisdom. And, Lord, that we would be able to do the things that would help move our city forward. Thank thee for each one here tonight. We pray that everybody would go and to work toward improving our city. All these things I lift up in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hall, can you give us a roll call? Roll call, please?
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Freiter?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
I'll present, Mayor.
We have a quorum. Announcements? Are there any announcements? Are there any public comments as they relate to items on the agenda?
Yes.
Would you come forward and state your name and address, please?
Rose Thompson. One Twenty Parker Stavager.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we... I was late getting in to get something on the agenda, Mr. Cotton.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just here today. Please, leave us alone, the school system.
Is this on the agenda?
Uh...
No, as they relate to the agenda, Ms. Thompson?
I understand that, and I wanna ask the council...
As they're items on the agenda, and that's what you have to state with...
Yes. I was reading the last time.
I'm not bothering you about a school system. Now, are you here representing the school board or representing yourself?
I'm representing myself, 'cause I'm part of the school system.
So, this is one citizen asking...
And you are one citizen, too.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, that's why I wish you worry about the crime, Mr. Cotton, the killing of these young blacks that's been killed in this community. And not only that...
Are you saying that I don't worry about them?
No, act like you worry more about us than you do what's going on in the city.
Well, Ms. Thompson, I can't... I can walk and chew bubble gum at the same time.
I don't know about that, but anyway, I just wish that you would.
Items as they relate to the agenda.
Isn't there a form that I can ask the council to let me speak? Huh?
Uh, items as they relate to... We'd have to expand the agenda now. You can ask... I'm gonna ask if the council wanted to make a motion and want to expand the agenda to include what Ms. Thompson wants to talk about, then do that, gentlemen.
But at this time?
Sir?
At this time?
Yeah, if you wanna expand the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Second? Okay, you gotta get five votes. Uh, can you call... Call the roll?
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Freiter?
Yes.
Mr. Locke? Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Okay, then, go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Cotton?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, I, uh... I'm worried about the school system, too. And kids in this system, in this school system.
Yes, ma'am.
I want the best for all kids, not just some...
Wonderful.
And I've been like that all my life, Mr. Cotton, and you know this.
Yes, ma'am.
But when you go to start putting stuff out there, may I approach with something to give to you?
Yeah, you can give me whatever you want, ma'am.
Okay. I'm gonna bypass you right now. I'll be back. There you go. I'm gonna give it to you. There you go, Mr. Locke. There you go, Mr. Cotton.
Okay.
When you made a statement that we didn't pay you...
I've never made that statement, Mr....
Yeah, you did.
Wait, wait, wait. Ms. Thompson, this is what I said. I said I've never charged a parent or a child. We're in the business. We charge Louisiana Tech.
And you charged us. We paid you, one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Miss, it's over five years.
It doesn't matter, but you started talking about it.
Yeah, you paid a company that... Yeah.
You, your daughter-in-law, son-in-law, yes.
Yes, you paid a company, and we did more work than we contracted for. Now, if you weren't there, talk to Dr. Nordman. Talk to Dr. Nordman. He was the principal.
Mr. Cotton, this is the record that they kept. My point is, Mr. Cotton, uh...
What's your point?
My point is... Let me turn around so you can get a good picture of me. The point is that you talk about, uh, these ACT scores. Those scores were just as rough when you was there with your organization.
Wait, wait, let me stop. Every time you lie, I'm gonna stop.
I ain't gonna lie.
Wait, wait.
It's in the record, Mr. Cotton.
The twenty sixteen, hold it. The twenty sixteen year, twenty fifteen, sixteen year, you guys voted to expand this. The scholarship awards for Baster High was one million, three hundred thousand dollars in twenty sixteen. You and three of your board members got together in an illegal meeting and banned me and told the principal...
That's a lie.
Wait, hold it.
You's a liar.
Wait a minute, hold it, hold it. That's what... That's what your people told me. I talked with Ms. Dow.
Your people?
Wait a minute, Ms. Dow said that you banned me because... Hold it, this lady, I'm not gonna let it...
I'm not gonna let you double talk either, 'cause it ain't got nothing to do with that, Mr. Cotton.
Wait, listen, just listen.
Let me finish.
You didn't, no.
Let me finish, and then you can finish.
I'm gonna stop you, no. Every time you tell a lie, I'm gonna stop you, and I'm gonna address the truth.
Uh, Mr. Cotton, you lying. Now, we ain't gonna go through that. Let me finish, and then you can handle it.
In twenty seventeen, the year you all banned me from coming out helping students even free, the scholarships dropped off one million dollars to two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars last year.
Anyway, Mr. Shaw...
Hold it.
Board members...
I'm not gonna let you lie.
I'm going to, uh... I was addressing that. I got... You got the facts before you. My point is that as a taxpayer, I want you to solve these murders if you can. Every month look like it's somebody getting killed and nobody... I talked with your chief. I done talked with your chief. And he said that they was trying to do everything they could and to try to get these murders solved. Um...
Ms. Thompson, go ahead. Go on, finish.
When I, when I, uh, address, uh, you and even the board, I have talked about things related to the school. And I have talked to you about things that related to the city up here. When you got, uh, a lot of things that I could bring up, but I'm gonna let the councilman bring it up, Mr. Cotton. Our only thing I want you to do is, the best way to solve the, in this educational thing, is we try to work together. I said try to work together. And not only can we do that, all the negative that's coming out of this parish is being hurt all around. Racism, race gonna be here until we die. But the most important thing is, we gonna have to try to work together as race, black and white, to try to bring this community back to where it need to be. And where it need to be, Mr. Cotton, is that if we work together, we can grow together. Not only can we grow together, all these misleading things that's going out there, it need to stop. I would say on both sides. But the thing of it is...
Let me ask you something. Did you guys ban me from coming out helping the seniors?
Ain't worried about you, Mr. Cotton, but anyway...
No, no, just tell the truth. Tell the truth.
Anyway, Mr. Cotton, that ain't about you.
Did you stop the football players? Did you stop the football players and coach, Coach A.D.? Did you stop him from letting the football players come and get ACT so they could have a signing day?
I don't know, Mr. Cotton. I don't... You's a liar. I didn't.
You did. You interfered. You know you did.
You was a liar. But anyway, Mr. Cotton, all I wanna do is say that we need to work together.
I'm not gonna let her lie.
We need to...
You know, let us speak, then you come in. That's all.
Go ahead.
All we need to do is, Mr. Cotton, all this black and white stuff, uh... I was involved in it years ago, but I see now, working together, we can get things done. Ain't nobody coming here with no jobs or nothing, even in the school system. They're not coming here with all the negative that is out there. And what we got to do is show a better leadership role and trying to get people to come here, not only for jobs, but in our school system. It need to be corrected, too, in areas. It ain't just with the city, but it's the whole community. That every day, I talked to several people in Monroe, every day is something coming out negative about this parish. And that is what's stopping people and making people leave. We black, 'cause we black and running the city, we gonna need white people. They got most of the business, the banks, car lots, all of that. We gonna have to work together to try to get something done, Mr. Cotton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, are you implying that I don't work with white people?
You was saying you didn't.
Are you implying that I didn't meet with Elton Kennedy this week?
Well, Mr. Cotton, you might have met with him.
No, wait.
But, but you done made response. You had two police officers, uh, white police officers, Mr. Cotton.
What about it?
Uh, from my understanding is, you told him this is a black city.
That's a lie. I haven't told anyone this is a black city. What I told the chief was, when I took office, I want a mixed police force. Four out of the last five that was hired were white officers. Okay? Two more were in the pool. I found that the recruitment process was flawed. That's why we put a halt to hiring until we did better to recruit. I put in a system, I asked for a system so that we could expand the pool. I was told that we couldn't find policemen, basically because, black ones, because drug test, couldn't pass the drug test. Well, I thought that we were shopping, fishing out of the wrong pool, or maybe didn't have bait on our fishing line. Because I told the chief that I wanted a diverse... Chief Campbell, did I not tell you that I wanted something closer to fifty-fifty? Can you... Do you mind responding? Did I tell you that I wanted something closer to fifty-fifty?
You told me eighty-five percent.
No, this is what you told... I said the town was about eighty-five percent. Come on up. Come on up, let's clear this up. This is what you told me. I asked chief. He said he wanted to hire two more policemen. I didn't ask who they were. I said, "Who have you hired in the last eighteen months?" You told me five people. Is that correct?
Yes.
You said... I said, "Well, tell me about the makeup, 'cause I'm concerned." You said you'd hired four white officers and one black girl, right? Your lady. Well, I asked you to punch it up. I said, "What's four out of five?" And you said, uh, point eight. And I said, "What is that, chief?" You said eighty percent. You said you wanted to hire two more white males from towns that I was concerned with. That I'm concerned with people, chief, and you know this, and Ms. Thompson got her information from somewhere.
It didn't come from him.
Well...
It didn't come from him. Trust me. It didn't come from him. It comes from one of the whites that you told that you didn't want white, you was gonna recruit.
That's a lie. That's a lie. That's a lie. That's a lie. Let me state what I told the chief. I said, "Chief, we need a diverse force. I want something close to fifty-fifty. I don't want Ferguson." I told the chief that, that he said he wanted to hire two more. And I asked about, uh, recruitment. Okay? Yes, I know, but she brings it up, and she accused me of saying I want a black, a black police force. That's a lie.
Can I interject, Mr. Cotton?
Wait, let me state something.
Can I interject, Mr. Cotton?
I'm not gonna let these people come up here and lie on TV.
Can I interject, Mr. Cotton? Sound like we need to have, do like Monroe, we need to have a form of race relations.
Thank you, Mr. Freiter.
Nah, it's not the time. We got a agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Freiter.
I said, "Six out of seven," what percentage of that was eighty-seven percent? I said, "I felt we needed to open up and do a better job of recruiting and retention." Now, that's what I said, Ms. Thompson, so don't get up here and lie on me, 'cause you weren't there.
I wasn't. I'm not gonna lie on you.
And wherever you got your information from was somebody biased.
It doesn't matter. Everybody lied, but you don't, Mr. Cotton. Everybody lied with you. But that's cool, but you know what? Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Ms. Thompson, and I don't wanna keep everybody belabored over this. Why can't... Let's go ahead and try to pull it to...
Thank you. I'm finna put... If he let me finish, I would've been through it.
You could've counted on race relations, bring everybody back.
Expand the agenda, okay?
That's right.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, but anyway, uh, Mr. Cotton, and, uh, one thing about me, Mr. Cotton, you know, I sit and let you talk and attack me for one thing.
I don't attack you. I don't attack you.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, but one thing about it.
When you lie, just frame it up.
But I want to attack back, trust me.
Attack, Ms. Thompson. I have no interest in attacking you.
Oh, I've been attacked, but hey, one thing about it.
What is that?
I will come back, and when I strike, I strike hard.
Ms. Thompson threats. I'm gonna leave that with you and God.
But you know what? I think the councilman...
That's between you and you, Ms. Thompson. Thank you.
I thank the councilman for giving me that chance. I really do appreciate it.
But when you, gentlemen, expand the agenda, I'm not gonna allow someone to lie.
You're right.
And this person said that we did what we did for... Wait, you opened it. The agenda is expanded. What I did for the school system was bring work keys, because it's twenty-five percent of the school performance score. That's what my company brought to this...
Run the city, Mr. Cotton, run the city.
And we also brought a program to... We had dropouts at thirty-some percent out of the school system. That leads to crime. Now, Ms. Thompson said... Ms. Thompson said... Ms. Thompson, you're out of order.
You are, too, because I don't stop talking. It's time for you to...
Do we have security in here?
Put me out. I want the people to see you.
No, I'm just kidding. I was only kidding, Ms. Thompson.
Put me out.
Mr. Cotton, Mr. Cotton, we need to move.
Wait, listen, you voted to expand the agenda.
But it's time to stop it, Mr. Cotton.
Hold it one second. One second. This lady implies that we didn't do anything. We brought the HISAET program to Moore House Parish, yes. And I gave the software to the school system free for a year. For Aztec, we got twenty students.
I don't see why I don't count you, so it's gonna be...
No, no, you're gonna attack me.
I did attack you with the truth.
Yes, and I'm gonna state what we did for the school system.
And you can't handle the truth.
We brought the HISAET program, and we identified twenty children who were not gonna graduate. And I gave the software to the school, Ms. Thompson, for HISAET bridge and some other things. Ms. DeValle, Jesse DeValle's wife, taught the class. By February, six of those kids had graduated from high school. The program was successful until the school board unplugged it. Now, that's what I did. The school board stopped the program to catch kids who were not gonna graduate, who was at eighteen with...
Can we take this to the school board, please? Let's take this to the school board, please.
You guys, you all expanded the meeting.
Well, we gonna stop it now.
Saying when you... Well...
We gonna stop it now.
Think the next time you expand the meeting.
We said five minutes. You said five minutes.
Think the next time you're gonna expand the meeting.
Let's go to the next item, Mr. Cotton.
And the ACT, the scholarships plummeted over one million dollars the year that we left. Go check it. Don't take my word for it. Bachelor Enterprise, all the media. Go over and check with the school and see what the scholarships were last year. The lowest it's ever been in the history of Bachelor High School, the lowest yet last year. There are only thirty-four, thirty-six kids out of one hundred and fifty-two with ACT scores over eighteen. We work with twenty of them off-campus. Now, if you're gonna talk out of your system, yeah, the truth comes out.
Uh-uh, yeah, the truth, Mr. Cotton, you could go in.
Let's go, let's go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, not again.
Thank you, gentlemen, for expanding the agenda.
I do appreciate it.
Approval of previous minutes, item... Does anyone else have any comments as they relate to the agenda? Or does anyone want to come up and expand the agenda? Is there anyone? Okay. Item number five, approve previous minutes of the regular held meeting, January the eleventh, twenty eighteen.
Second.
It's been moved to second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, the minutes are approved. Finance Committee report, resolution eighteen dash seventeen fifty-five, bills and claims for the month of January twenty eighteen. Mr. Shaw?
Uh, Mayor, we have reviewed the bills and claims for the month of January of twenty eighteen, and I make a motion that we accept this report.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaw?
Second.
Second by Mr. Locke that we approve the Finance Committee report. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The eyes have it? The report is approved. December seventeenth Revenue and Expense Report? December twenty seventeen Revenue and Expense Report?
It's just, um...
That's included.
It's included? Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, it's listed as a separate item.
Right.
I'm gonna entertain a motion to recess the Bachelor City Board of Alderman meeting, and we're gonna go into a Sales Tax District one meeting. Do we have a motion? Will someone move for us to adjourn this meeting and to, I'm sorry, to recess this meeting and to convene the meeting of the Sales Tax District one, number one?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Been moved by Mr. Green?
Second.
Second by Mr. Freiter? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any others? That's three. The eyes have it. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, so the... We're in recess, and the Sales Tax, Bachelor Sales Tax District, number one meeting is in... So, go to the other agenda, please. Call to order? Roll call, Ms. Hall?
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Freiter?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
I'll present, Mayor.
We have a quorum. Public comments as they may relate to items on the Sales Tax Agenda. Public comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Bradford?
It doesn't do with the...
The streets? Yes, sir, the potholes and...
Bishop Charles Bradford, thirteen twenty South Washington, street idiot ambassador. I just, um, wanna say I seen the special meeting you had, and I kind of did some research and followed and looked up on it, and, uh, very, rather me and Mr. Cotton agreed, but, you know, that's a good project, I think. I just wanna share it with the city people. Let's... We talk about working together, doing the right thing together. Let's do something for the citizens of Bachelor by purchasing this thing here, this machine, the pothole. And I think it'd be a great asset to our parish, because we can share it with the police jury. And I think it's good, uh, from what I researched, I think two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And, uh, I just think sometimes we need to do something for ourselves besides fussing among one another, and this would be good for everybody. This is a time to draw the line in the sand for peace and love and black and white, green and blue. Let's go forward in our community. Let's do some positive things. I don't always agree. I think you seen the last time you seen me, I went to a gribble. But if I see something good, I'm just gonna call a spade a spade. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
And to the Alderman. Speaking to the Alderman as well, who have to make the decision. Sometimes we have to do what's good.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments as they relate to the business of the Sales Tax District? Approve previous minutes of the February eighth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
That shouldn't be February the first.
February, February one, yes. That's a mistake on here. That was one week ago today. So, with that notation, Ms. Hall, that is duly noted. Thank you, Councilman. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion to approve the previous minutes?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of February the first.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second for approval of the minutes of the... Do we have a second for approval of the minutes of the February first, last Thursday's meeting?
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Green, to approve the minutes of February for the Sales Tax District, number one, meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The eyes have it? All opposed? The eyes have it. Resolution eighteen dash seventeen fifty-six, BST one-twenty-four, a resolution approving a Louisiana municipal lease purchase agreement to be entered into by the City of Bastrop, Sales Tax District, number one, State of Louisiana, in the principal, in a principal amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for the acquisition of a new Kaiser infrared three-ton Patriot truck and asphalt equipment, authorizing the execution of such agreement and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Josh, Mr. Josh Leonard is here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Josh, how are you doing?
Doing well, thank y'all for having me. I'm Josh Leonard with Bolshafter and Leonard, and, uh, this is, we're really revisiting what we went over last Thursday. Um, it's a, a lease purchase agreement, so we wouldn't have to go to the Bond Commission. But in order to do it that way, there's, uh, two, two clauses that have to be in the lease, and the one that's really appropriate here is there can't be a clause that requires y'all to appropriate for the lease every year. So if next year you decide you don't want the truck, you don't appropriate for it, they can't pick it back up, the lease is void.
We won't be penalized for it?
No, no penalty, nothing.
So the maximum risk is one year, the one year of the lease?
Yes.
So that's the maximum exposure that we have? Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're not exposing ourselves to two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars?
No.
Okay. Is there any question about that point?
What, what is this, um...
Let me get your phone.
Financial, I'm sorry. The financial advisor and also the, um, counsel?
Yes.
Special counsel? And how much do you determine that was gonna be?
Um, all told, and if we had a purchaser's counsel or, or vendor's counsel, that would be extra, but our fee is set by the Attorney General. Uh, and I had calculated for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it was fifteen hundred dollars. It will be less than that if it's two-twenty-five.
For both, for both?
For, for just us. And then the, uh, financial advisor, I think, is a thousand dollars. So twenty-five hundred in total. But that was for two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so probably closer to twenty-two fifty.
And the reason for that is using bond counsel and lawyers that specialize in this is to protect citizens and citizens' money, taxpayers' money. Uh, that's what I fathomed it.
Yes.
And you wanna add to that, Josh?
Just that, yeah, in order to do this properly and not have to go through the Bond Commission, it's a little tricky, and that's the main reason we're involved, is to get this done properly.
And this is a capital lease, as I understand it, and not an operator's lease?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you explain briefly the difference between a capital lease and an operations lease?
Uh, really, this is a lease to purchase, and so you're not, you are taking ownership of the vehicle, and at the end of the lease, you would own the vehicle in full, would be the, the big difference.
And am I right to assume that we, that we can get out of this annually?
Yes.
And not, year one, year two, year three, year four? Is that correct?
Correct. In order to do this lease where we don't have to go through the Bond Commission, there cannot be a non-appropriation clause, meaning there cannot be a clause in it that requires you to appropriate money for the lease every year and penalizes you if you do not. There also can't be an anti-substitution clause, which means if you find another truck just like this and wanting to stop using this one and go lease that one, you can't be penalized for that either.
So what you're saying is if we found a better system next year, then we could start fixing potholes in two weeks upon delivery of this truck? And if we didn't like it eleven months from now, and we found a better way to do it, we could opt to do that and just let the truck go back?
Yes, you would not appropriate for this one, and I appropriate for another one, yes.
Okay. Is it, are there any questions so far, gentlemen, about the difference between...
So from what I'm gathering, a year, so we don't be responsible for ten thousand dollars?
Uh, if that's what the amount is, I don't have it in front of me.
No, the amount would probably be, it depends on whether we go with a five-year lease. I favor a five-year lease because we save on interest payments. We are way under the cap of what our budget will stand. This money is not coming out of the five-million-dollar, uh, bond money, is that correct, mister?
That's correct. This is coming out of what is left over from that sales tax after the principal and interest on those bonds is paid.
What's the interest rate on this thing?
On this, it's not to exceed four percent. I think the most recent I looked at it was like three-point-six.
Three-point-six.
Now, we have a quote from Government Capital out of, out of, uh, uh, do you have that with you, Ms. Lenore? The quote? Send the packet? Okay. In your package, you have a quote from Government Capital along with, out of, uh, out of Brookhaven, Mississippi. And I believe there, let's see, item, this is the sales in use. Seven pages back? Okay, so, does everyone have this in the red?
Yeah.
Everyone have this? Uh, do you have a copy, Josh? And I believe that your firm, Bolshlaw, fashioned this for us?
Uh, we reviewed what was sent.
You reviewed, okay. All right. And it's been reviewed by our counsel, Mr. Pierre? And if you look at the back of this, there is a, there is a, and, uh, the facts of it, now this is the truck itself. Uh, it's my understanding, and we have a representative from the USDA here with us, that we asked for several things from the USDA and a grant. Let me give the history real quick. Uh, when I came in office, I knew we needed to do something about streets and, and lots that were overgrown, so the counsel went with us to buy our Stedtskeer, and we've been cleaning lots this week, um, with the, with the mulcher and all of that. But the rain came and we had to stop. I do thank the council for their wisdom in, in going along with us on this. The next thing we needed to do was something about our horrible streets because we've got potholes everywhere. And we don't have a comprehensive plan, we have no plan, except to throw, to, to go and buy, buy three or four, five or eight ton tons of asphalt hot mix and throw in the hole and pack it down as best we can. And, uh, I'm gonna get Mr. Isaac Gray, is he here? Mr. Gray, to come and talk about that in a minute. Uh, we're talking about the financial aspect of it. So I, I thought that we would, uh, find, that we would adopt, I talked to counsel at the LMA, Mr., Mr. Moore and I sit down at the table, had a good meal, correct, Mr. Moore?
Right.
Mr. Mills, Moore said he loved it and that he was willing to, to put up the two-hundred-thousand dollars and support it.
Well, you and Mr. Moore had the meal.
We had a meeting, right.
We didn't have, we didn't have the meal.
Mr. Prater, you were probably at the casino, just kidding, only kidding. Mr. Prater was not at the casino in Shreveport, done LMA. But Mr. Moore and I sat down, and Mr. Moore reviewed the truck and said that he loved it, and that it was a good idea, and he was willing to go with us. Is that true, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Yes, great. Uh, um, the, the truck price is one-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars, and this is two, two plans. Uh, and this is the maximum, this is the maximum that will, they've already, they've already said, we'll do it for Bastrop. They, and there's a sheet of all the cities, uh, not all, but other Louisiana cities that they've done, that they've done, uh, financing for. What they do, they go out and shop banks, they are a middle person, they shop banks and, and get the money and then, uh, pass on to us. But the three annual payments of seventy thousand dollars or five annual payments of forty-three thousand dollars, this is max. Now, our, our financial advisors, uh, government finance...
Government consultants.
Government consultants. Uh, wanted us to start here and let you know that this is the highest that we'll pay. But what they're doing, tomorrow, if you approve this on Friday, they're gonna shop this with banks, and they know, they feel that they know they can beat these rates. But I wanted to give the council the highest that we do. This is the most that we'd spend per year. And our exposure tonight is forty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents for the year. We could be asphalt and fixing potholes permanent, with permanent fixes if we would venture and commit to this capital lease, which means the, the, the truck will be in our name from the start, but we could get out of it just like you lease a car, okay? And you can walk away with those. But, uh, Josh has explained it, and I won't mess it up, Josh, okay? Um, so forty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and twelve cents is all we need to start a, a, a comprehensive program. This is the real commitment, a comprehensive program, because what we have now does not work. Mr. Gray's gonna come and talk about that in a minute. This is grave, this is, I can't tell you how bad our streets are. Mr. Duncan Jones warned us about the liability that we, that we are exposed to. If someone reports a pothole, we've got seventy-two hours to fix it. That's the law. And once we know about it, even if we don't acknowledge and say, I know that's there, we know they're there. The undercarriage of a Mercedes-Benz, the steering section of a Mercedes-Benz is over five thousand dollars. Front-end alignments. The, the exposure that we are exposing the citizens of Bastrop to is tremendous. It pales in comparison to this, to this meager, uh, deal. And I want you to imagine something. The five million dollars that we're spending is going toward about seven percent of our streets. Every ten years, we borrow five million dollars, and we have a Phase One and Phase Two, and we spend every dime, and we got nothing basically to fix streets with. We have probably two-hundred miles of streets in the cities, in the city limits of Bastrop, if you put them all in the end. We're fixing, we're applying five million dollars to Mr. Shaw's district, over two million dollars. Mr., 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 uh, Green, say, how much is your, in your district, Ms. Green?
I think it's like one-point-some million.
One-point-two, one-point-one. What about yours, Mr. Locke, you know?
About one-point-five, if, no, no, it's not even a million.
Not even that.
Not even a million.
Why they not broken down equally?
So...
They not broken down equally?
Well, the, the cause of those streets, some of them are longer.
Mr. Prater, how much is in your district spent?
Probably about five or six hundred thousand, not even a million.
Okay, now, um, so the, the meager streets, you got River Street maybe, Mr. Prater?
Yes, sir.
And one more maybe? One or two more?
One or two more.
Okay, Mr., Mr. Moore, how many, how much is your appropriation?
One-point-three.
One-point-three million dollars?
About half a trillion.
Okay. Do you, do you feel that, that that five million dollars and the seven percent of the streets that it's gonna cover is adequate? That's the question that we're here now. The question is, we've got seven percent of our streets or so, that's my calculation. I invite anybody to go Google map and measure, or take the measurements of the, the list, and measure how long we're paving, how many miles we're paving. And my calculations, and I invite you to do this, is about seven percent of the streets, which means that the other ninety-five percent of the streets, ninety, ninety-three percent is getting zero appropriation, except the hot mix that we're wasting by going down to the asphalt place, coming back and dumping into the hole, packing it down, and I'll ask Mr. Gray to come talk about that. We're talking about the financing. Is there any question you gentlemen have about this capital lease? This meets the require, this is not coming out of the five million dollars. So even if we ran out of money on the five million dollars, we collect seventy-seven million dollars a month through the sales tax.
Seven-seven million?
Thousand, yeah. Wishful thinking. I thought this was New York. I'm sorry. I thought this was New York. We, we collect seventy-seven thousand dollars a month for sales tax, that the people voted to fix streets. Of the seventy-seven thousand, here's seventy-seven thousand, we spend fifty-two thousand to service the debt on the five million dollars. That means that we have a margin of somewhere around twenty-four to twenty-five thousand dollars, depend upon sales tax collection, but it averages right at seventy-seven. So that's the money that we're gonna pay back, this meager, this meager amount that will give us the best system in the world to address the ninety-seven, ninety-three percent of the streets that nothing is allocated for, not one plan. We don't have a plan at all, nothing comprehensive. It's all about getting some shovels, going to West Monroe, or going to Drea, loading the truck down with eight tons of asphalt, and going around dumping it in holes, and it's gonna be up in no time. That's what we have. So the critical question here tonight is, a hundred percent of Bastrop's streets, we're spending five million dollars on seven percent and zero on the other ninety-three percent. Five million dollars on seven percent, and we're scared to allocate forty-three thousand dollars a year on the other ninety-seven, ninety-three percent of the streets. That's what this meeting boils down to tonight. Ninety-seven percent of the streets, and if you live on one of those streets that's not East Pecan, if you don't live on South Cox, if you don't live on Rivers, if you don't live on, 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 uh, what? Yours, Bunny, what is that street name? Bailey? If you don't live on Bailey Street, if you don't live on Manning, then you are... I can't say that word. You're out of luck, okay? You're out of luck. If you don't live on one of those streets, you are out of luck. There is zero plan to do anything about those streets. Now, we got the best system in the world, a system that you can pave year-round, even in cold weather. And we're not, we may not be willing, we wanna fight over forty-three thousand dollars a year, maximum. That's what this meeting is about. What do we do about the ninety-three percent of, of streets that we have no plan for? We're spending five million dollars on seven percent of the streets, and we're spending, we're not willing to spend anything.
So roughly, a year, we get like three-hundred thousand in street funds a year?
Uh, whatever, eight times twelve is what, seventy? What is that?
But we only get twenty-five thousand a, a month, right?
No, that's, that's over and above, no, we get seventy-seven thousand a month. But fifty-two is allocated to pay back the five million dollars that it takes to take care of about seven percent of the streets.
Right.
Now, my question is, what are we gonna do about the other ninety-three percent of streets that has nothing but shovels and, 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 and going, wasting asphalt, uh, and packing asphalt that's gonna come loose? We are spending tons of money and labor, five guys out with trucks and packing stuff in, that's a waste. Every hole they fill, they gotta come back and fill it later. Mr. Gray knows more about that than I do. But that's the decision that we have here tonight. Now, we can fight, we can honker down and take positions, and we can say, I'm not gonna support the mayor 'cause the mayor brought it, or whatever you guys wanna do, but what we're really doing is we're telling those people who live on ninety-three percent of the streets that, now, that's, that's what this boils down to. So, Mr. Josh, I didn't mean to have you standing there a long time, but is this our maximum exposure, uh, if we went with this plan and this plan meets your requirements? And, and look, I'm not saying we do, we are, but what Namby, what, uh, Government Consultant is doing, based upon the vote tonight, they're going to shop tomorrow, they're sending, they already got it ready, saying, "Banks, give us your best rate. I think we may be able to get down to two-point-eight percent." That's a number that, that's been thrown at me. Okay, whether we can or not, I don't know, but they fixed that so not to exceed a certain rate. Yeah.
The resolution is four percent. If NAMD said this is the high end, I would believe what NAMD said.
This is the high end. Government consultants, NAMD said he's sure, you know, within, he's sure that they can beat this, based upon our credit rating.
So we can get a lower, lower than that, forty-three thousand, that's what you're saying?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, I expect this to be lower than forty-three thousand. Now, take, now, what, what the figure that they have is that the USDA told us, here's the history. When we took office, when we, this council and this mayor took office, the fire chief came to us and said, "I need a snorkel truck." We had just spent three hundred thousand dollars for a truck to replace the truck that was wrecked, okay? So we spent three hundred thousand dollars, we had like twenty-five, we increased that budget by five thousand dollars, okay? A year. Remember, we were paying for a truck and we just got it paid out. And this truck wrecked and we took that money in the budget and slid it over to pay for, for fire engine number two, I believe it is, oh, one. Fire number one, the nice shiny one we have. We're trying to get our fire rating up. I'm committed and I believe this council's committed because the council's been very corporate. We wanna take our fire rating from a four back to a two because it'll save twenty percent on everyone's house insurance on average. So that's what we want to do. So the fire chief said, "We need a snorkel truck." We put a snorkel truck in a grant to try to get forty-five percent of that cost. We also asked for police cars, which Chief Campbell needs. We asked for police cars. I believe we're gonna get the snorkel truck and the police cars. We'll have to pay something, but the USDA, I believe, is gonna grant those two. And we put in, Mr. Gray said he needed a backhoe, a smaller one that could get small ditches because we've got so many small ditches rather than taking a great big thing that could take that over and do a much more efficient job. And then the truck to, to repair ninety-three percent of the streets in Bastrop for two hundred thousand dollars. Those are the four items. Immediately, the USDA, when we applied for the grant, the USDA told us, in fact, "Your building is, is, does not conform for the last sixteen years to the Americas with Disabilities Act and we are not gonna give you any answers until you fix the end of the building." So we had to fix the end of the building to confirm with the ADA, Americas with Disabilities Act, because the slope was too great going straight down out of this building and dangerous. Now, we had to wait six months before we could get that fixed and get an audit because we asked late. Because I felt that these problems, the fire truck, the, uh, the police cars and the, the asphalt machine and the backhoe were worthy of us giving a shot after August the first and, and apply. We applied and I think we're gonna come out all right. But my indication is that they just informed us three weeks ago that they probably won't be able to do the truck. Why? Because they said, "You've got the money." That margin between the fifty-two thousand and the seventy-seven thousand, you have the money. If you didn't have the money, we could talk about giving you something, but it's clear from your accounting that you have the money to buy it.
Mayor, can we vote?
No, we, no. Uh, uh, we're gonna get all the information in because the people, we're here for the people, Mister, Mister Green. We, people need information. We have too many rumors going around town based on lies and have truths. Now, yes, right, we're taking care of the people's business. You signed up for this. Uh, now, now.
Mayor, he deserves better than that.
No, no, I'm saying, we have to, the people are here to hear the whole story. And if we vote without the people being aware, I'm not for that and I'm not for that. So, uh, you have any questions for Mr. Josh?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to repair these ninety-three percent of the rest, rest of the roads? How fast do you repair them?
It's like eating an elephant, one bite at a time. I'll tell you how much, I'll, okay. How many potholes do we have? We've got thousands of them.
How many, how many do we get through the system with a claim to the city?
No, uh, no, sir, not now. Mister Green, please. Mister Green, if you wanna, Mister Green, please, let, let's discuss this, okay? We don't, the presentation is not over, Mister Green. I have a presentation. I have a right to, I have a, I have a, Mister Green, we have, Mister Green, we have to do the people's business. Now, I know that there are councilmen that are not in favor of passing this. That's why we're talking, okay? Because they don't have enough information. And I'm not gonna let that be an excuse that we don't have enough information because I feel if we had a vote now, it would fail two to three.
Well, if we're gonna do it today, next week, they're not gonna vote, they're not gonna vote.
Mister, Mister Green, Mister Green. Okay. Let's have some patience here. Jesus.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Uh, uh, it's not ready yet, Mister Green. We're not through with the presentation. Mister Green, you're prologue in the presentation. Okay. Is, is there any questions about the finance? Because we need to talk about need because the people, the press is here and they need to hear the truth. Because if we don't.
Another question, Mayor.
What's the question, sir?
Question is, what is wrong with delaying this for ninety days? And then come back? And if it's as good as you say and we hadn't depleted all our funds in our phase one street program, it oughta be, it's, it's, it's a goat.
Here, here's my thing, here's my question. What does this have to do with the five million dollar street fund? It has nothing to do.
It has because we are, we own that. We own that debt. And we gotta make sure we pay it up. Now, we may be fined on it, but I don't, we can't.
Well, let's, let's just, let's just deal with that. You bring up a, a good question and I'm glad you ask it. It seems that the council is afraid that the three point eight million dollars that we are spending on phase one, that, now, this is the other administration, the last administration, got the streets and said, "We're gonna spend three point eight million dollars on phase one." And then we'll have another one point two to go and pave up about a mile of street in phase two. Because that would be the cost of paving a mile more, no more than two. Can we agree on that?
We've got the money, I don't.
No, no, but I'm saying, but can we agree that that's all it would do? That that's all the other million dollars would do if we had the whole million? That it would pave maybe another mile and a half?
Well, the other piece of this, Mayor, that we gotta keep in, in perspective is, we got Martin Luther King Bridge, it's gonna factor in. It's gotta come out of that street.
That's coming, that's right, out of the five million dollars.
Right.
Okay.
It's gotta come out. We got overrun already in this that we gotta count for. All I'm simply saying is.
Is Bradley here? Let's talk about the overrun. Because I wanna address all of your concerns. That's what councils and mayors do, is address every concern. Now, if we stop now, we will not address every concern. And councilmen will say to their constituents, "Oh, I didn't understand this. Oh, the mayor didn't tell me that. Oh, we didn't do this. If he would've just told us this, I didn't understand that." I wanna be clear because we are paid to take care of the people's business. And sometimes that takes time. It takes time at moments like this. Uh, any questions about the financing? Does everyone understand that, that we're talking about a maximum of forty-three thousand dollars a year? That's not counting Mr. Gray's backhoe. This is just a truck.
Okay, where the backhoe money gonna come from?
That's factored into his amount. I just had quotes on the truck because the truck is the item of contention. The truck, the asphalt truck that's gonna solve our street problem, that's gonna give us a comprehensive street program for the first time in the history of this city, we will have a comprehensive street program and patches that last. So that's what I'm trying to do and we're bickering about forty-three thousand dollars a year. So I just want all.
We're bickering about the timing of it.
Well, here's the problem with the timing. We are piggybacking. Do you have a handouts for the gentleman, OP one? Do they have this? Mister Josh, do you have anything, a, a question for financing? Does anyone have any question? And do you understand that we meet the requirements that we don't have to go before the bond commission? Is that correct?
That's correct.
If we adopt this resolution, we don't have to go before the bond commission?
Correct.
And we can act immediately?
Correct.
And the financial, our financial, uh, government consultants is gonna shop their bonds if we approve. They're gonna shop, not the bonds, they're gonna shop the lease terms. They're gonna shop that tomorrow and give banks until Monday afternoon in order to respond, to compete with this lease from government capital.
That's what NAMD said.
That's what NAMD said, yes, sir.
Can you put the two, the worst, uh, best case scenario? Put the two point eight and see what we'd be responsible for that one year?
Uh, if, if someone can run an amortization schedule on, on, um, two twenty-eight, if you wanna give Mister Gray his, uh, his small backhoe so he can clean little ditches rather than taking that great big backhoe that we got out there?
So we, they don't, we talking about the truck or we talking about the backhoe?
Well, there are two things the USDA is not gonna find.
But what we talking about today, we talking about the truck?
We're talking about both in what the number that he's given. I just got numbers on the truck because I wanted you to see what the truck is costing. This is numbers on the truck, but the same interest rate. All we have to do is pull up on your, go to Google and do an amortization schedule, put in two hundred and how much?
This looks like one ninety-six.
The one ninety-six for the truck, yes.
How much is the backhoe?
Twelve thousand or so, I, yeah, but they put in not to exceed, not to exceed.
Not to exceed two twenty-five.
Okay. We got the USDA here to, uh, talk. Can you come up and talk about your, what you can do at the USDA? Now, the USDA is a loan which we would have to go to the bond commission, is that correct?
Yes, sir, you would because it's a federal dollar and you're being a municipality. Our raise.
Can you introduce yourself?
I'm Cheryl Rogers from USDA in the Monroe office. And I'm the community property specialist and I work these type of projects. Anything for the community that's needed, whether it's, we do loans and grants. And like the mayor said, there are a couple of projects that have been worked on that's looked at for grant. But due to the financial situation of the town, you are able to repay a loan for this equipment.
Can you say that again, please?
You are able to repay a loan based on the financial reviews and our underwriting that's completed on it. We're able to go up to ten years for the financing of this equipment based on the sales tax. Our current interest rate is three point five percent. That would make the monthly note be about two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars, which would equate to approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. But now, you're not gonna have that opt out if you buy this equipment. This is a loan. It has to be repaid. It's gonna be yours at the end of that time. And so that's, we do have that option available. We've worked that project out.
What's the amortization go on?
It's three point five percent for ten years. Monthly payments would be two thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And that's about what, a year?
Uh, about twenty-seven thousand.
Twenty, twenty-seven thou, the cost of one employee. We're talking about the cost of one employee that we've gotta pay hospitalization for, we gotta pay retirement for, we gotta add FICA. Now, in Shreveport, the videos that I got, the two hours worth of videos that I have for you tonight, where I went to Shreveport, uh, you'll see two men operating this truck. It'll save us in salary much more. It'll save us in salary alone and give us permanent patches. And we can do it for twenty-seven thousand dollars a year if we chose that route. We're talking about the cost of one employee. We're not talking about paying for this thing right now in one big chunk. We're talking about, we're bickering about the cost of one employee. And we'll have the best, the most advanced, uh, program in the country, infrared asphalt repair. We're buying it from the most reputable company. We are, now, if you look in your, you see this government capital? You see this, uh, uh, that's in here, so we dealt with that. And you're offering about twenty-seven thousand a year. That's an option, correct?
Yes, sir, based on our current interest rate.
Okay.
Now, our interest rate does change quarterly. But we're ready to the point to finalize the underwriting process and send this up for recommendation of funding. But we shall have to agree to this so that we can proceed forward.
So this is two options. If we go with the USDA and they're willing to go ten years with us and will cost us about the salary of a person. And there's no person, no super person, we don't have John Hendrick, the Steel Driving Man on our staff. You know, we don't have anyone that can race this truck and do anything. But we need this so desperately. There's nothing, there's no piece of equipment, period, that would, that would revolutionize any department like this one expenditure will do. So, thank you so much for coming up.
Another option too is that in this amount that was figured, that's the bond council fees, attorney fees. So you would not be coming up with any money upfront. It would all be funded in the project.
Okay. Thank you so much. And do appreciate, hate to have you out so late. Okay, all right. Now, um, if you guys will look, Mister Gray, can you come up, please? Mister Gray is our public works director. He was commended at the last council by some of the people in this audience for the great job that he's doing. I hope that you respect his, the job that he's doing. And, uh, Mister Gray, you hadn't been slighting any district, have you? You hadn't been slighting any district, any of these councilmen. You've been working in their districts, I hope.
Ask them.
Okay. I didn't want you making anybody mad costing us votes here.
No, if they call, I, I, I come see.
Yes, sir. Mister Gray, uh, you've got eight years on the police jury, right?
Yes, sir.
You know what a pothole is?
Of course, yes, sir.
You've dealt with potholes as a police juror for years, correct?
That's correct.
And you all got tons of them in the parish.
Yes, we have ruts, potholes and everything out in the parish.
Yes. Um, parish doesn't have a solution. In your expert opinion, what do you feel? Do you want this truck now?
We need this truck now because the potholes are getting bigger, the streets are getting worse. The council must ride their district, they know the condition of their streets.
Tell me this, what, what, have you repaired potholes since you've been here, Director of Public Works?
Up till this morning, we repaired two.
Okay. Now, what happens? Did you repair any before the storm? Before the, the cold weather?
We repaired some before the storm. We tried to save the city some money by using the rap that we had out there.
And the rap is the money that, that the asphalt that's coming off the streets.
Yes.
We're getting two hundred and twenty thousand tons of that as they dug up, uh, East Pecan. All that asphalt, it's called rap. Well, we're storing it and we're using it, but it's not good for potholes. It's just good to, to, uh, fill in something. I think you did two where someone had stole, uh, some gravel off of a street yesterday.
Yeah, we did two of those, uh, the first, I think it was Monday. Monday, we had to do two of those on this, on, uh, road street where somebody went there and dug out the gray rocks and stuff out the street. So we had to repair that right quick.
Right.
Went all the way across the road with it, so.
And, and you, you're right. When you, these, these potholes that you're repairing, are the, are your repairs holding up?
No, sir.
What do you have to do after three weeks or a month or two months?
Go back and repeat the same process.
In your opinion, is that wasting?
Of course, yeah, that, that is wasted.
If you had an option for a system that would permanently fix potholes?
That, that would be the best option, something that we can go ahead and repair the potholes and not repeat ourselves by going back because we're going in a circle. By the time we fix this pothole over here and go do this one, this will need fixing again. So only thing we are doing, I just going in the circle. And one thing that I'd have done, uh, I call what I, I move them up front. Beat the seventy-two hour thing. If I get a call about a pothole.
Even though you know there's tons of them, there's hundreds of them, right?
I have to get the ones I know about.
But if they call about this one.
I have to get the one.
You gotta hustle.
I have to get the one they know I know about.
Okay, okay.
I got, I got a bad one off the vision.
It'd be fixed tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
You just gave the notice, it's got seventy, seventy-two.
It took the council meeting to get me to go fix it tomorrow.
It'd be fixed tomorrow.
You're definitely.
Huh?
I wrote that one down today.
Okay.
I wrote it down today.
Mister Prater just asked Councilman Moore how fast to get fixed.
I have a Mercedes, I have a Volkswagen.
Ask my fa, how, how fast to get fixed?
Oh, it's pretty fast.
Pretty fast.
Is my Volkswagen, you gonna pay for it on the line, my Volkswagen?
It'll be fixed, I'm gonna do it within the seventy-two hour.
Mister, Mister, uh, can you, Mister Floyd, can you queue up that? I'd rather stay here and get all the information out. Yes, yes. We, this is important. I'm in Shreveport. And we're looking at a repair.
Potholes that were repaired with the asphalt truck. This was over two years ago. Over two years ago, okay.
This is the fairground where traffic is.
Okay. Okay, we're right up the interstate, right up the interstate there, there's the Spar Stadium. And we're about to look at a. And we're about to look at a pothole that was repaired using the, the, uh, system. So this is the pothole. So this is two years old. And this was, the road was, I guess this was worse than the road here.
Right, this was a big old hole in the middle of the road.
Okay. 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 Two winters, plenty of rains, and this is what we have.
You can stop it.
And it's better than a-
Okay, city of Shreveport. My friend Ollie Tower invited me to Shreveport to, uh, post something and they were discussing, this is two years ago before I decided to run for mayor. They were discussing this system and she told her, those two gentlemen are supervisors with the Shreveport Park, uh, Shreveport Public Works. Last Friday, last Thursday, I played the superintendent, the, the guy over streets and he said, and I can play that one again if you all need to listen it again. He said that they were ordering eight tons of asphalt a day and with this truck, they're ordering one half ton. They're saving, this truck is saving them hundreds of thousands of dollars in labor costs with quality repairs. It heats the asphalt, it lets down the, the burners, heats the asphalt to seventeen hundred degrees, it's raked, it's carved, uh, areas marked, uh, done and they spray a little rejuvenating oil on it. They put a little asphalt in, the quantity that it takes to, to, excuse me, to, to fill the hole. But it's mixed and it's recycled. We'd be recycling asphalt. We'd be saving more than forty-three thousand dollars a year on asphalt alone. The as- the asphalt alone, just the cost of saving will save more than we're talking about spending. Now, I don't wanna be penny wise and pound foolish.
I got a question.
Yes.
Now, we skipping Monroe and Reston going way to Shreveport, what, what does Monroe and Reston do?
Monroe and Reston throw and go. They got, they got antiquated pothole repair system. They got a little bit better equipment than ours, but this process is what makes the difference. Monroe, uh, doesn't do really quality repairs. The reason I went to Shreveport is because, uh, and I talked to Mayor Mayo about this and he's looking at it right now. The trouble is that right now in Cleveland, Ohio, Google this, the national, the National Highway Pavement Association is running a convention in Cleveland. We were in line because I thought all this and you gentlemen voted to pay one hundred and ten thousand of this and we get a, back, you gave me authorization to seek the grant that only paid eighty-seven thousand dollars or so from the USDA, forty-five percent. So you agreed already to a hundred and ten. You agreed.
But we didn't have the overruns in our mayor.
But that's overruns in the five million dollars.
Right.
That's in the four million dollars, three point eight. Bradley, can you come up, please? Bradley Alexander, let's talk about the overruns because we wanna put a, we, we wanna define what the overruns are. The overruns are not that East Pecan needs, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand cubic yards more. The overruns are common because, uh, we want to make sure that where we are paving these streets, that the sewer system is, is intact. Now, Bradley and I, thank you for working so closely with us, sir, and the great job that you're doing. Bradley, can you discuss the overruns, the two overruns and, and where in your opinion, and I know you're not trying to please me and say what I want to hear, I want you to, you're telling the truth, you're a professional, I would never ask you to shade anything. Now, East Pecan Street and, and South Cox, are those the ones that we have the most trouble with as far as sewer, right now in your opinion?
Right now, it's, it's South Cox in Cleveland and that's one on the other meeting that's on the, what is, the sewer down there is, is coming apart. They, they had camered the line, uh, two thousand twelve, two thousand fourteen and they wasn't, they wasn't that bad. Now, whenever the contract for the road came, they were supposed to go in and camera everything and I notified that they hadn't done that and then that's when you would move forward and tell them to camera again. They found four or five.
Can you, can you tell, tell what we actually did? They were probably gonna go along with those two hundred, two, twenty-twelve camera, right? And it's been, uh, six, seven years since that, correct? Okay, since it was camera. And you and I discussed it and I authorized you to get them to camera it again, is that correct?
Correct, because it was all part of the contract, them camera it was part of that, but the, there's an, it's gonna be an overrun of the cost because replacing that sewer line compared to what they were gonna do, they were just gonna make some point repairs, which we had already gone in and made two point repairs, if they're, we've made two and they were gonna make three or four more.
So that was gonna be excessive, is that correct?
It's gonna be excessive and if you got that much damage of what's already there, if you cover up the road, we're gonna have to go in and cut a brand new road up and that's not feasible to do.
So rather than waste the money that we're putting new asphalt on, 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 uh, South Cox and Cleveland, I guess it is, right? The two that we talking about here? We made the decision, with your advice, I authorized them to go on and do the sewer work. What was that sewer work like? Did we do a pipe burst?
It's gonna be a pipe burst from close to one sixty-five down the south, down South Cox two. I don't remember the name of the road and then on the other end of it, finish it off and then on Cleveland.
So we'll have newer sewer lines, we'll have new sewer lines where those old ones were compromised, is that correct?
Correct.
And they could cave in?
They could. We had a spot that, one of the point repairs we did, it was a small hole from the surface, but it was, it was a big void underneath and that's a washout from under the road.
And we could be liable if somebody fell through them, you know, ran the car off and so we wanted to put, make, we want to have the integrity of the sewer system that's in the middle of the road, is that correct?
It's in the middle of the road.
Middle of the road on these. Is the sewer system in the middle of every road?
No, sir.
Okay, but these two sewer system, middle of the road?
Yes, sir.
So therefore we need to fix the sewer first before we overlay?
Correct, otherwise you're just gonna be tearing up a new road to replace the sewer.
So that, that constituted the overruns that you're aware of? Is that the only overruns that you're aware of, basically?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Yeah, and that was because if those sewer lines would have been on the side of the roads, we would not have had to do anything, is that correct?
Correct, we could've, we could've fixed them.
To your, to your understanding of these streets that we're going to pave, do you know of any other streets? And, and the overrun, I think was forty thousand on one and it's about eighty and ninety thousand on both those streets?
Ninety thousand, six hundred.
Ninety thousand on both of those streets, okay. And you would, you all agree that that was the right thing to do?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, do you feel that there are center of the road sewer on a lot of the other streets? Have the others been cambered that?
They, they have, they replaced some of the roads that were overlays like Bailey, they had, that was already in the plan to replace the sewer. They replaced them, uh, and the overlays, as far as any other that remain, I don't, uh, see much of a problem with it.
So in your expert opinion about sewer, strictly about sewer, do you think the possibility exists that we'll have in this first phase, five hundred thousand dollar worth of overruns? Okay, three hundred thousand dollars worth of overruns?
No, sir, I don't see any more other than what we've already looking at right now. I think that's the overrun because it wasn't allocated beforehand.
So, so the big, well, I won't say that, but the, the speculation that these overruns might just pop up out of the ground and just be wild. You don't see, you don't see, um, that happening right now?
No, sir, but, uh, it could, uh, happen at any time, but as far as what, uh, knowledge I have of the system now, I don't see it, no.
Okay, and the overruns are due to sewer lines and not pavement, not the cost of, because that's fixed. When they say I'm gonna pave and put this much surface on this road and it's forty-one hundred feet, they can't get another penny. They, they locked in. So the only overrun will be with something like sewer.
Correct.
And that would have to be down the middle of the street, like it is on South Cox.
Down the middle of the street or on one side or the other street. Some sewers are on the left-hand side or the right-hand side or in the middle and some of them are out in the ditch. The ditch won't have anything to do with it, but if it's in the road, before they pave over the road, that, that'll be an additional cost because you need to have that sewer replaced before you put down a new road, that way you're not tearing up a new road.
When are we paving East Pecan?
I believe they said they were gonna try to do it Monday, but depending on the weather.
Okay, all right. Any questions?
When is, uh, when's the anticipated finish date for this contract?
Uh, that I don't know, they pushed it back because of, you're talking about the road? The road, they, just depending on weather, they've got a certain amount of time, the weather is depicting on whether or not they can do it because they were supposed to, uh, do East Pecan already, but now they've pushed it to Monday due to the weather.
Okay, so the other, the other, we don't know for sure about that, but we know it's within what, the next sixty, ninety days?
Yes, or something like that.
And this is in that five million dollars that you're talking about, right? Yes, okay, yeah, in the five million dollars, which the truck, the truck is not coming out of that, but go ahead, Robert.
Another piece of this and that is the bridge at Martin Luther King that we know that, that we're gonna have to replace.
Yes.
We gotta, we gotta pay for our, our part of it, which is at least all the fees and the surveying and engineering and everything it goes with.
No, 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 what we're paying for, Mr. Shaw, is this. The, the federal highway off-road, uh, program funded and this, they recommended this bridge on Martin Luther King be replaced twenty years ago. And, uh, it's down to, so they did plans and they were in the metric system, they have millimeters and centimeters and meters and that kinda stuff. Well, the United States went back to the English system, so now the plans have to be redrawn uh, because it wasn't done, they would've done the whole thing free. They paid, you know, the plans, the whole thing, but because they, they paid for the plans, now we've got to pay to have them changed or we will lose our slot in that high-tech bridge across Martin Luther King. And the cost is now, um, so we voted, this council voted to spend a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, I believe, is that right, Robert? Okay, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to have an engineer in firm redo the plans for the bridge. We got a commitment from the department of, because before this council would allocate money to do, redo the plans, this administration went to the Department of Highways and got a commitment that if we spend the money, they'll put the bridge in this, in this, in this twenty eighteen, nineteen. So we're gonna build a new bridge and that's coming out of the five million dollars, okay? And our exposure is a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. The federal government will pay the one point four now, because it was a million dollars, but now it's about one point four million. The gentleman that, that gave us the okay is retiring. And, uh, so it's imperative, and I talked to Mr. Boyd, uh, yes, I talked to him today and they are proceeding in both haste because recently twenty-four projects, I mean eighteen projects, were twenty-four bridges and one bridge is in Morehouse Parish. If we hadn't started that and you gentlemen hadn't voted like you did, and I'm glad you did, then we would've lost our position because they were killing it this year. This was our last year to get the money and when that bridge failed, City of Bastrop would have to build and spend a million dollars to replace it or more. So I thank you for that. So yes, that's part of, so we're at three million eight thousand of the five million dollars plus a ninety thousand dollar overrun, ninety what, Robert? Ninety something?
Thousand, six hundred.
Ninety thousand, six hundred, okay. And so we're at three point nine now. If you take the bridge, that's gonna put us at, this is the complete phase one. Now, they put a lot, they graded a lot of streets and said, phase one, we'll get those and if you have enough money, we'll go to phase two and do those, you know?
So, let me, let me say, I'm trying to understand this.
Yes, sir.
Get the best benefits.
Yes, sir.
Out of this. Are you saying that you feel like you can guarantee that we will not default on the five million dollars?
Mr. Shaw, I guarantee it. I'm not giving you, just trying to sell your bill of goods because that's coming out of the fifty-two thousand dollars. We, we collect seventy-seven thousand.
But if, there may be something else that always seemed to crop up. And here we go.
But my-
I'm just saying if we're wise enough to make the right decision.
Yes, sir.
And I've been debating this, I think, and I-
And I, and I heard that prayer of yours.
Everybody on this council last Thursday night agrees to win, to get the equipment. All we were worried about was the timing.
Yes, sir. And, and I know that's the question. Okay, let me, let me help you on the timing. The truck that we were supposed to get is right now in Cleveland and the plan was, if I called a special meeting last week and we got this done last week, these trucks are not on a showroom floor. These are custom-built in a plant in New Hampshire. Uh, we'd lose our position in line. We got in line because we piggybacked on the Shreveport bid and I have that for you here. Here is OP one, and I'm gonna get to your point, Robert, I wanna answer that, sir. OP one is an article out of the, this is the same factory rep that did Opelousas and Shreveport. February sixteenth, twenty sixteen, they talked about roads, uh, just, uh, desperate, in desperate need of repair and Opelousas for decades. Mayor Tatum and Opelousas Public Works Director Brent Zaha are looking for ways to solve these problems and it goes on and down, say from pricing perspective, Tatum and Leger's, uh, company charges. They charge, the guy who's selling us this owns a fleet of these trucks, Tim, our factory rep. He owns a fleet, he, look what he charges a day, Mr., Mr. Moore. What does he charge a day? It's in yellow, this is out of the Opelousis, uh, newspaper. It's thirty-five hundred dollars per day. He pays his help nine hundred dollars to two guys a day to run it. This truck is worth thirty-five hundred dollars a day out there repairing streets, that's in the newspaper, that's what he charges. He did the demo for Opelousis just like he did for Shreveport, none of their patches have failed. Uh, this is, uh, the next SV three, where's SV, oh. SV, SV two, this is exhibit two. This is an article out of the Shreveport newspaper, the Times, Shreveport Times and it's from April twentieth, twenty seventeen. And it says, infrared pothole repair truck coming to Shreveport, this is in April twenty seventeen. Now, we're talking about timing here, that's the question. Shreveport ordered their truck in April, they got it in December, okay? They got it in December and, uh, they're saying that there's no shortage of potholes in Shreveport. What we are doing now ain't working, that's the same thing that Mr. Gray said. You could replace Shreveport and Opelousis with Bastrop in any of these articles and it fits our scenario. This piece of equipment, I believe, offers us great hope in being able to fix our potholes and fix them right. Says one of the councilmen, Mr. Floyd. And he talks about the long run. SV three-
I have another question.
Yes, sir. What, I didn't answer your question on time, why is it important? It's important because the truck that's in, in Cleveland right now, that was gonna come, they asked me permission, hey, can we drive your truck, your city's truck, to a trade show and, you know, we're gonna put some miles on it to get to you. We wanna come rather than going down to Atlanta, we wanna go over to Cleveland and then down, probably put five hundred miles on it extra. But since we don't want to take a truck to Cleveland and bring it back to New Hampshire, this is the one that we had earmarked for, City of Bastrop because we thought that the USDA would be through in, in August, September. We thought that your council would approve, uh, last week. And your truck, the truck that we were gonna get is in Cleveland, Ohio, right now at the National Highway Paving Association National Conference. And they're there to show it off, to show other cities, you can buy this truck. So our truck will be sold, I'm sure, this week, but they said, we're gonna give you one more chance, Henry. We're gonna, we have a Kenworth that the Kenworth plant said is on its way to us now. We'll reserve that one for you and we hope to get it out to you in a couple of months. If you don't act now, we're gonna go on and put other orders ahead of you. Now, if that happens, suppose they sell five trucks at the conference, I'm being conservative. Suppose they show everyone what's happening in Shreveport, what's happening everywhere else. They, they, there's a law in, in New Jersey that you can't make a repair on a highway unless you use this system. They use this in the state of New Jersey. They use it in New Hampshire. They use this system everywhere up north because it's the only thing that works, is to heat the surface, scarf inside, bond hot to hot. Yes, sir. What's your question?
Training.
Okay.
Training for these operators, too, I'm hearing, too.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's included in the price.
Is that included in the price?
Yes, sir, that's included in the price, plus Mayor Ollie Tower, if, if, if I go on and play the rest of the film, if you wanna see it. They committed that they'll train. Okay, alright, Mayor Ollie Tower, Mayor, Mayor Ollie Tower, Mr. Gray's already worked it out today. How many men were you gonna take, Mr. Gray?
For training?
Yes, sir, and Shreveport's not gonna charge us anything. We would go and take them, and they train. Now, the trainer, Tim, the factory rep, is gonna come to Bastrop, that's included in the price. Shipping, getting it down here, delivering it to us, that's all included. And, and the training is included, and we got extra training because we're gonna go over in Shreveport. And go to my Facebook page and watch it, I got the videos, Mayor Tyler arranged, she said, come on over, Henry. I'll make sure they fix a big pothole for you, okay? And I went over, and it's all on video, I videoed them, from start to finish, it took fifteen minutes to repair, and they were done. They were done, fifteen. I did it and counted the, the minutes, and fifteen minutes, we had a repair that's not gonna need any help for five years, probably. It's gonna be fixed. It's the best system in the world. The cost is minimal. We're talking about the cost of one employee. And this will be the best employee that the street department has. Now, we've got the bid, uh, Shreveport was, so we met the bid requirements, there was a question about, uh, that was asked of you guys about, is this the best price? Well, Shreveport, if you look at SV three, this is the bid, Mr. Ernie Negretti, that's the video you saw last week, that's his name right there. He's the guy that was up there talking about how much money this truck has saved them, how they're buying in the whole city of Shreveport a half ton of asphalt a day instead of eight tons. You know, I didn't curse him, I didn't pay him to say that. Uh, this actually worked. I know, I didn't, I didn't, Robert. But, but, but if you look, so that's the bid. And the question was that one of the councilmen called me and said, hey, I got an email saying, what, have you gotten the best price? So, that's why I put it in here. You see in the, in the, on SV three, it says bid sync? It says attach the bid tab. We are piggybacking on the Shreveport bid, which means we don't have to. There's a piggyback clause in here on page, on page like page three, saying that we guarantee these prices for Shreveport. But the city of Shreveport's kind enough to allow us to take one of their slots. Now, so there was a question that was posed to you gentlemen about, maybe we need to shop for a better price. Well, this was put, it says bid sync here, and bid sync, this is SV four, it says save time, bid smart, win government business. Bid sync is the largest public sector bid database in North America. The city of Shreveport spends a lot of money processing bids. I didn't want us to spend that money. I didn't want us to put stuff out on bids and do all this stuff and get counsel to make sure it's right. So, I went to Shreveport and said, hey, would you give me one of your trucks, if I can get my council to go along with it? Mr. Moore committed to me in Shreveport in June and July, that he was for it a hundred percent. We were eating.
I said one hundred percent, Mayor, as long as it's in the budget, but now since you explained everything, I got a little clarity now. We never was against the machine.
Okay, thank you.
So, we want that to go on record.
Yes, sir.
But since now you guaranteed us no default.
No default, not a chance, no, not a chance, not a chance, sir. And so, this was put out on bids, on, on what every person looks at, uh, the largest database in the world. SV five is the, is the solicitation from the commodities, but it's more stuff. But it's everything you need, everything-
Let's take a vote on this.
You sure?
I'm positive.
You don't wanna see some more?
Let's take a vote.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Green, you wanted to make the motion.
I changed my mind, no.
I hope you didn't change your mind on the truck. I hope you didn't check. I talked somebody out of it.
So, talking, you don't like to listen, so.
No, Mr. Green, this is so important, it's the most important thing. Okay, that's up to you. Uh, but this is the most important thing that we can do, gentlemen. It works.
Alright, Henry.
Yes, sir.
I'll get, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Robert.
But, I got stipulations.
Oh, my God.
This, this Facebook stuff that's going on, we get stuff on there and it's not right. It's not right.
Okay.
That needs to be dealt with.
Okay, well, go ahead.
These businesses that are part of the Chamber of Commerce, don't run them down. They paying taxes.
But they sent a letter to you all, that's true, and they, they had misinformation in it.
Listen up.
But go ahead, I'll listen.
The way you deal with misinformation, you get with the parties involved and work it out.
That's right, that's right.
Look, I'm, I'm trying to compromise here tonight.
And I appreciate it.
And I, and I look forward to your commitment now.
I'll make a commitment. But, but, Robert, you know, go ahead, I'm not gonna interrupt this motion. Can I say something?
Before we motion?
What, Mr.?
Now, you said, the taxpayers, well, the taxpayers also elected us to look after their money.
Right, true.
Yes.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay, Mr. Prater.
And I'm not gonna commit to a long-term whatever. I'm gonna commit to maybe, if I go along with it, my stipulation gonna be one year.
But that's what you're committing to. Well, you're committing to do the deal, but you can get out of it in one year. You can get out.
Let's do it.
Let's do it?
For one year.
Who's gonna second?
One year.
I don't have a second.
I second.
It's dying because of lack of a second.
I second.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Moore, that we proceed with the resolution. Uh, any discussion?
Make sure.
One year.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
We don't have any kind of legal roadblocks. And Josh has got-
That's what Josh is for. That's what Josh is for.
We could opt out with any, out any penalties.
Right, opt out without any penalties.
Josh, can you come back, please?
If we were to enter into a lease that did not have that clause and didn't go through the bond commission first, it would be void. So, it will have to have-
Y'all gonna ensure that?
That's what we need to do, to get out after that one year.
Right.
If we not happy, if we don't have the money, if not in the budget.
If we, if we entered into a lease that, that did not have that clause and didn't get bond commission approval first, that lease would be unenforceable. So, it will be there.
Yes.
Will this machine be operational in Bastrop? Because I think the people of Bastrop, they've heard you all night, and they're gonna wanna know when you're gonna get started.
And I want my district first.
You didn't make the motion. You didn't make the motion, Mr. Prater.
Take my, take my vote back. Take my vote back.
Robert made the motion, and, and he seconded.
Mr. Gray.
And we're going-
I've been trying to make the motion.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. One thing for sure, Mr. Locke, Mr. Locke's question was, when will we get it? One thing for sure, if you didn't do it tonight, we would not get it in eighteen. If we didn't do it tonight, we'd be behind every order that they have, because we don't have an order.
You said the truck is ready to be brought?
No, 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 I said that one, we lost that one because we didn't act last week. The one, we lost that one. I will contact them and see if we've actually lost it.
No.
Now, hold it. Yeah, but, but I've been lobbying, and it's like somebody calling up saying, hey, I'll pay you next week, I know I told you last week. But I'm, you know, I've been going back and, back and forth to them, saying, hey, we're gonna do it, we got a good council, hey, they're smart, we're gonna do it. Okay, but NMD will shop the loan tomorrow, the money will be available Monday after next, should be. We're gonna send them the resolution that you all sign tonight. I'm gonna call Tim and let him see that we've done this. In fact, I'm gonna give him a link to this video, and so he'll see that you guys have done it. And the plant people, he's gonna contact them in Cleveland. And if we can't get the one that we were gonna get, the one that's in Cleveland now, I hope that we can get it. But we will get one close to coming off the line, Mr. Locke. It depends on whether they've gotten orders, I doubt if they've gotten orders because, firm orders, because even if there are people excited about their work, they gotta go back to their cities, and of course, there are private contractors who can write a check right now up there. And that's what I'm trying to do, is get ahead of all that. So, Mr. Locke, again, I promise you, I will work day and night to try to get us this within a couple of months, okay? I'm trying.
Truck will be in a couple of months.
No, I don't know that. I don't have control of the plant. I know one thing, we will be quicker because you took the action tonight than we would if we delayed three months from now. If we delayed three months from now, I can guarantee you, we wouldn't get it in this year.
I think that was our concern all night, maybe by that time, the roads would be finished and all this just been-
Well, we gotta do something about the other ninety-three percent of the roads. Those seven percent will be finished, but the ninety-three percent people still be replacing tire audience.
Now, you said last week, the guy was standing by the phone waiting on, he not standing by the phone tonight?
He don't believe anything I say.
Seven, seven, seven more days.
My credibility is-
And he was standing by the phone last week. He not by the phone this week.
Siri, call Tim. I'm just kidding, of course. I'm only kidding. I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. Okay, uh, any discussion? It's been moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Moore, that we proceed with this resolution. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
We got stipulation of one year?
All opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you.
You ignore me, Mr. Scott, and I told you about communication.
Listening.
You don't listen.
Mr. Prater, I gave each of you my number. I even text and called some of you.
I'll do Facebook, Mr. Scott.
No.
I'm in an, I'm in eighteen history.
This is passed, Ms. Amanda. Need to adjourn? If I had a motion, I would, but I think they wanna see two or three more movies.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Shaw, that we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, Robert. I appreciate it.
We gotta go back to the regular agenda.
Okay, sales tax. I'm so happy, I'm ready to go home.
Hold on.
I am not nervous after we are.
Okay. Okay, alright, uh, what do I need to do? I'm so happy I've lost my-
Is Mr. Gray's machine, that a small machine?
That, that's up to you guys. Now, did you wanna add Mr. Gray's machine in the financing plan? Mr. Gray, you're out of luck.
Well, that's his small machine.
It's a standalone, it oughta be a standalone.
Well, we can do a standalone on that.
Yeah, don't, don't mix it up.
Mr. Gray, you gotta, you gotta lobby these gentlemen for your, your little backhoe. Another time.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Prater?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
President.
Locke? Our president, Mayor.
Uh, we have a quorum. We back in city council meeting, and let's see. What do we have? Eleven. Okay, eleven. Resolution eighteen dash seventeen fifty-six, a resolution informing the state of the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of actions taken to maintain permit requirements for Louisiana Water Discharge Permit System. That's the LWDPS system, LA, number LA zero zero two zero one oh nine, West Pond Treatment Plant, Mr. Bradley Alexander and Ms. Sandra Harris. Is Ms. Harris here? Hello, Ms. Harris, how are you?
Uh, this is a resolution that's every year, uh, through the DEQ, we're required to submit, uh, it tells all the results of our labs for the last year, anything that we've got going. It also tells the age of each plant. Right now, we're up to, um, as far as years, we are like twenty-two years, using twenty-five years. They pretty much require that you do some more modifications. It's been twenty-two years since our last one for the main plant. But this resolution is just something that's yearly for the main plant and the West Pond.
Firm one right now, they're just different resolutions.
Yeah, they doing both of them.
No, it can be better to separate them.
Um, and it's just saying that we're gonna continue doing report repairs for the Veolia, uh, bi-monthly cleanings, uh, line replacements as needed. Continue operation maintenance and upkeep of the North Pond and pre-treatment facilities. Continue operation upkeep of the rehabilitation of the West Pond. Developing SOPs to streamline operations of new equipment brought. Uh, continue cross-training for operators for collection systems, uh, continue to train our personnel, uh, and upkeep on software and all.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Got a question. Where's the West Pond and North Pond?
The North, uh, the West Pond's out by the detention center out here off Eugene Way Road.
Mm-hmm.
The North Pond is off of Shelton. Go up, know where Remcor is?
Right.
It's the gravel road down there.
Alright, thank you.
And it drains into the West Pond.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Been moved by Councilman Shaw.
Second that motion.
Second by Councilman Moore, that we adopt Resolution eighteen dash seventeen fifty-six. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Reso, item twelve, Resolution eighteen dash seventeen fifty-seven, a resolution informing the Louisiana Department of Environmental Quality of action taken to maintain permit requirements for Louisiana Water Discharge Permit System, the LWDPS, number zero zero two zero four four three, that's the main treatment plant, uh.
It's, it's the same way as, uh, West Pond is just, we under the permit for the main plant on that.
Okay, are there any questions about this? Okay, do, can we have a motion?
I'm gonna make that motion, Mayor.
Made, the motion made by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, and second by Councilman, uh, what's your name? Prater?
He gonna lose his vote.
Prater, Prater, Councilman Prater, that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion is adopted, resolution is adopted. Uh, discussion, action, repairs, sewer, main plant for Cleveland and Cox Street for street overlay, Bradley?
That's what we were discussing earlier, it's, uh, they're having to repair the main lines, pipe burst them to keep the roads from possibly caving in and cutting into the roads after they put the new roads in.
I make a motion that we accept that this action item on repairing the sewer for Cleveland and Cox Streets.
I second that motion.
Any questions, other than what I said earlier?
No, I can do a good job explaining it.
The motion's made by Councilman Shaw. Do we have a second? Oh, second by, Mr. Prater?
Yeah.
Mr. Moore?
Moore.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, moved by Councilman Shaw, second by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, that we authorize this? Any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's, it's done. Uh, Chief Campbell?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, item number fourteen, counsel, is, uh, your Fred Store, twenty seventeen, East Madison Avenue. They have applied for a class A retail dealer off premises. I went through the application, contacted my contact with the state, uh, their permit has been approved. It was pending when I last spoke with them a couple of weeks ago, so it's following through, they'll finish with the state. So, I do recommend that, uh, we issue this new twenty eighteen license.
Chief Campbell has recommended that we reissue this license.
Reissue, have they ever had?
No, this is, this is a new.
Oh, it's new, okay.
Yeah, your Fred's is-
Fred's, where I go get my toilet dryer?
At your-
And they gonna have a look in there?
Yes, at your Madison Plaza. I went out and looked at it, and, uh, there's no issue with the, uh, North Monroe Church branch that's on Hope. Mr. Locke, I have looked at it, uh, you would have to walk out, get onto East Madison one sixty-five. You'd have to go back west to get to Hope, and then you would have to travel by foot down Hope. I, I quit measuring once I got to the street because it's, it's, has to be three hundred foot, gentlemen, we've been through that, and it's, uh-
Clearly.
It, it's, you, you've got fencing, and it's not a common way to walk to even get over there, and then with that large ditch, I, I quit measuring by two fifty, two seventy.
Do they have any, uh, students working in there?
Uh, that would be-
Would that be, I'm quite sure that's not be-
That is managerial for Fred's and also for the state through alcohol, tobacco. So, tho, those governings and laws are not controlled by your police department. That's run by state agencies that do spot checks.
So, you're saying you checked everything that we?
I did what we had to do, or you wouldn't have my approval and signature here, so.
Okay.
The, the measure is not an issue because of the way a person would walk, and no sidewalks, so. I recommend that these licenses, uh, this is a new application that it'd be approved.